Okay, let's grab a seat and get this meeting started. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to our March 13th council meeting. I'm showing that we're a little bit late at 7:30, 4:00 PM. Mrs. Sarsisi, it's so good to have you back.
Thank you, sir.
It's very, very tough. We need you here when we're trying to carry on a meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Ms. Hanekin.
Here.
Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Ms. Tully.
Here.
All right, I would ask everyone to stand. We're going to have our council president, Dave Engel, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Councilwoman Jan Tully will say tonight's invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to believe in the impossible and remove the improbable. Let us remember tonight that impossible actually equals impossible. Working together, anything can be done for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Are there any changes to the minutes?
There is no minutes in this.
There is no minutes, thank you.
That's good.
That's even faster. Moving right along, I have a proclamation this evening. This is Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our villages, cities, and states, and whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of transportation and recreation for over 200,000 people across this state and millions across the nation, and whereas in an effort to make motorcycling in Ohio a safer and more enjoyable sport, motorcycling organizations from around the state are now planning a collective venture to promote motorcycle awareness. And whereas all motorcycle organizations, clubs, dealerships, groups, and highway officials in our state should join with Abate of Ohio, Inc., and the Motorcycle Ohio Program in actively promoting safe operation, increased rider training, improved licensing efforts, and motorists Awareness, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roadways throughout the state of Ohio. And now therefore, I, Donald Cook, the mayor of the city of Macedonia, urge all members of our community to join in recognition during the month of May 2014 as Motorcycle Awareness Next on our agenda is comments by the public. Anyone is welcome to make comments, but you need to sign in, and we have a sign-in sheet tonight. We ask that you come to the front and use our microphone and give your name and address. Try and limit it to five minutes, and we have Fred Quigley. Fred?
Fred Quigley. I live in the Villas of Terramina. Simple question. Who died? The flags have been at half-staff for over a month.
Half-staff?
Half-staff.
Where? At City Hall?
Right here, City Hall, yeah.
Sorry about that, Fred.
Okay. If someone, whoever's responsible, just get ahold of me. I can give you a very simple solution for it, and it'll be over with.
Okay, can you give me your phone number or something after the meeting or whenever? Okay. All right, we're going to move right on. There's no other people that are on the list this evening, so we're going to go into pending and/or new legislation, starting with Ordinance Number 26, 2014.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 26, 2014, for its second reading by title only.
Thank you.
Second?
Oh, you don't have to second. An ordinance providing for the 2014 annual appropriations.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance Number 27, 2014.
Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance 27, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a three-year contract with the Ohio Municipal Joint Self-Insurance Bureau for the purposes of obtaining liability insurance for the city of Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law Ordinance Number 27, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 27, 2014 passes. I'd like to compliment Scott on his efforts in researching, trying to get us our best deal, and coming up with the company that's not only our best deal, but also gives us excellent service. Ordinance Number 28-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance 28, 2014, for first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance creating an indigent driver interlock and alcohol monitoring fund, 215, pursuant to the mandates of state law.
And what's your pleasure?
Before I move that we post and pass, I'd like to just comment so that the people understand what this is about. As the ordinance title indicates, it's a state-mandated program requiring us to collect from the municipal court and hold funds for part of the offenses or penalties for driving under the influence. It does not require any money from our budget at this point, and it is state-mandated, and it is therefore budget-neutral. With that explanation, I would move that we pass and post Ordinance 28, 2014 according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, I did not hear the second.
I seconded.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance 28, 2014 passes. Moving on to Ordinance 29, 2014.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 29, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance accepting the proposed water main easement for the residential development known as the Enclave at Macedonia.
And what's your pleasure?
Could we have Mr. Feeney just very quickly talk and address what this is for?
Absolutely. Nick, please.
Yes, this is a piece of legislation authorizing the city to accept the easement from the developer. Enclave is a residential development. It's at the south end of South Park Drive, about an 80-unit residential development. It will be private, thus the necessity for the water main easement.
Thank you.
And what's your pleasure?
I'd like to offer Ordinance 29, 2014, that we pass and post according to law, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 29, 2014 passes. Resolution Number 30, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 30, 2014, for first, second, and third reading, title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to file on behalf of the city of Macedonia an application to the Summit Akron Solid Waste Management Authority, otherwise known as the Authority, for a community recycling access grant.
And what's your pleasure?
I'm sorry. I move we pass and post Resolution Number 30, 2014. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Resolution Number 30-2014 passes. Jim, can you give us a couple of sentences?
Sure. This is, we get this every year. It's the reworks. It's for our recycle bins at the rec center, and plus, we'll be able to pay for help during leaf season this coming year. And that's where we're going to have those gift cards that we'll be passing out in the spring. That also comes from this type of grant.
Great, thank you.
I think it's important to note, this is nine, almost $10,000 worth of money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Resolution Number 31-2014.
I'd like to offer Resolution 31, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorizing the approval and adoption of the Summit County Hazard Mitigation Plan and for the Executive's Department of Law, Insurance, and Risk Management Division of Public Safety Emergency Management Agency and declaring an emergency.
And what's your pleasure?
And and for, I'm sorry, I should've said and and for.
I move that we pass and post according to law Resolution 31, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
And Ms. Tully.
Yes.
Another one that we do every year so that we're eligible for mitigation through our county. Moving on to any other legislative actions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the mayor to accept on behalf of the city of Macedonia a donation for portfolio funeral homes for $100 for use by the Macedonia Senior Center.
If I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And thank you very much for that. Are there any other legislative actions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to offer a motion to take from the table Ordinance Number 133-2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An emergency ordinance amending codified ordinances 16119 regarding longevity benefits for non-contract and eligible Macedonia employees.
And what's your pleasure?
I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 133, 2013, for its first, second, and third reading.
Second and third.
Yeah, it's second and third.
Sorry, second and third, you're correct. And...
Second.
Okay, well, we've had a reading, now...
This is her second and third reading, so now we need a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry, Dave, Mr. Engel, sorry.
I was trying to move it along.
Yeah, sorry, I got all, okay. Perfect. Everybody's in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, now.
What's your pleasure?
Yeah, I thought I said I just passed and post Ordinance Number 133, 2013.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Yes.
Ms. Hanekin.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Ms. Tully.
Yes.
I'm just going to make one comment here. This will match up the non-contract and eligible Macedonia employees with contracts that were signed late last year, and it has extremely small budget impact, and it's actually maybe a benefit in the area that we don't, we'll no longer pay for people who resign, only for people who retire when we give them longevity benefit.
All right, and thank you very much on behalf of the employees involved. It's not many, but again, too, we had this group kind of left out in the cold by the union negotiations, and now it's taken care of. Thank you. All right, next is correspondence from the clerk.
I have an answer.
All right, next is my report. House Bill 377 is still moving through the Ohio House of Representatives with the Senate bill in tandem. This is a bill that could be worth $62,000 to the city of Macedonia. $1 million is due to go to the village of Northfield from the state for hosting a casino. Some state representatives feel that part of that money should go to Walton Hills, part to Macedonia, to be fair. This was their idea, not ours. Can we count on this money? No. Could we eventually get it? Yes. Are there problems between us and Northfield because of it? No. We work in tandem with them in every phase of our safety forces and would never jeopardize our relationship. Macedonia has testified at the hearing, saying that we could use some money because of infrastructure updates that can be partially attributed to the Roxino. The perfect solution would still be to give each community the amounts being addressed. We don't want our neighbors being short-changed. There's so much happening in this town, and as far as infrastructure, building, that it's mind-boggling. You will soon see trees coming down on South Bedford for an assisted and unassisted living complex, along with a private housing development. Then you may see orange barrels popping up again, our favorite subject, but on Route 82 and 271, please be ready. Please plan for it. Please look for alternate routes. And if you don't have it, sign up for our Police Nixle text program. And that way, you'll be texted if, for instance, a road is completely closed. It's better than finding out when you get there, if you can get the text before you leave. As agonizing as it is to deal with, remember that all of the building and road widening will help keep your city stronger in the future. Also, keep in mind that the city has no intention to evict anyone. The house that will be taken for the new Interstate 271 ramp was for sale before the ramp was even on paper. A checklist of procedures mandated by ODOT are put in place to protect both the seller and the city, to make sure nobody gets the short end of the stick. We finally started to get road salt. Probably be playing catch-up all summer. That's how far behind our deliveries are. Using salt on our roads helps us to keep safe. But the flip side is we are expecting our roads to suffer greatly from this winter. I don't know if you saw it or heard about it, but there's a new product in process for dealing with chuck holes that's being tried in Cleveland. We will be watching this in the following months, and we'll consider it in the future if it works as advertised. For right now, only thing we can do, the best we can do, is cold patch. The new product being tried in Cleveland claims to adhere better than cold patch. Cold patch can fill a hole quick, but it can leave it just as quick. So we've had some holes, four times they've been filled, or even more. It happens all the time. If you have our Macedonia app on your smartphone, you can take pictures of chuck holes, and we will know exactly where you took that picture with GPS location. The Macedonia app is now updated. We have new pictures of our council and staff, and have even more important information to give you better service quickly and efficiently. We have updated our city website. That's supposed to happen tonight, so I'm a little bit premature, and hopefully everything goes well. "I anticipated as being much improved after weeks of intensive work by my assistant Diana and Julie Diallozo." I didn't pronounce that right. Diallozo, okay, thank you, Sylvia. I'm copied on their efforts during the process, and man, I can verify the intensity. So go to www.macedonia.oh.us to see it, or you can actually access it from our smartphone app. We're still taking applications from streets, neighborhoods, homeowner associations to participate in our WEWS Building Better Neighborhoods program. Contact my office if you would like to participate for this program that will highlight our city as a desirable place to live. Your group, if you form it, we form a group with you. You will meet, you will get into and establish a relationship with our police department. You'll be taught all kinds of good stuff to know, and it actually is just a little bit of camaraderie where we care about each other, and that's never a bad thing. Safe neighborhoods is the goal, and we could actually have one of these people or groups on TV appearing on WEWS Channel 5. Remember, we're only seven days away from the first day of spring. Thank God. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Moving on, are there any committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a report from the Finance Committee. But first, I want to just mention that we did have the Cable 9 Financial Town Hall meeting for Macedonia. It will be televised. We had the meeting here at City Hall on March 6th. I want to thank Scott for all the work that he put into producing the briefing that we used, and we have about 25 people in attendance. I've gotten a lot of very good feedback from it, so we really appreciate all the work that was done, and Jeff Cole has told me that he will let me know when we're able to see that on the Time Warner Cable. And they also will have video disc available at some point. Haven't been told yet when. And as to the regular Finance Committee, we have had our third meeting on March 10th, and we are down to the last several decisions that we needed to make regarding the coming budget, and we've made a lot of progress. The other night, there were a couple of adjustments that were made, including requesting a 3% reduction in the operations budget of each department to cull $41,000 for, to support a full-time dispatcher request from the chief of police, and that was done. So we're getting close. There will be a final budget reading on the last meeting of the month, and hopefully we'll work through all the issues. So thank you very much.
All right, if I can, can I request a meeting with all my department heads prior to the last reading?
We've had several meetings. I think what we're, we have provided tonight, or will be tomorrow morning, they'll have, everyone will have a copy of the final revised version of the budget, and I think that all the input has been received. We got about $3 million to consider the aerial ladder truck in requests, and we have narrowed it down to what we think is in an affordable shape this year. So I don't know of any new issues that we need to address, but we can talk about this offline.
Thank you. Any other department, or, I'm sorry, committee reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission will meet Monday, March 17th, at 5:30, and we have a request for a conditional use permit for long-term care, nursing home, and accessory uses, and a proposal for site plan approval at 9735 Valley View Road, and we also have a proposed site plan approval at 9730 Valley View Road, and also a proposed dynamic display sign at United Methodist Church. We also have a proposed wall sign at Windmill Golf Center, and we have a proposed replat to convert lots to common area. And we also have a proposed antenna addition at City Hall. And then also, Mr. Mayor, the JED meeting has been canceled. That was going to be Wednesday, March 19th, and that's all.
Good job. Any other committee reports?
Well, the Parks and Rec Commission surely is waiting for that first day of spring. Our meeting again got canceled yesterday based on the 50 mile an hour winds and the visibility and the snow, and so we're trying again this coming Wednesday at 7:00 PM. It's the day before the first day of spring, so keep your fingers crossed. I'm hoping we can sit outside and bask in the sun, but I'm an optimist there, so you're invited, but we will be meeting up at the rec center on Wednesday, the 19th.
Thank you. Any other...
I think we should adjourn to the Keys here.
Yes. Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none. Jim, how about department reports, starting with you?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to touch base on what you were talking about, the potholes. I'm going to try, I'm just going to buy three tons of a material from a company in Akron, J.A.S.A. It's a high-performance cold patch. It's supposed to be able to use it in sub-zero temperatures. It's supposed to permanently repair potholes, but I'm only going to buy three tons, because it's about $25 a ton more. So we'll try three tons. We'll pick a road, we'll try it, and see how it works. And if it works, then I'll come to council, and we might have to get a little bit more money to use this product, but we'll test it first.
Would you please notify me with an email what section of road you're putting an ad on, so I can inform council?
I want to try a heavily-traveled road like Valley View.
Yeah, or Highland, all of there that...
Something that's, where there's a lot of traffic.
Okay.
Because then that's a true test.
Just let me know.
I'm guessing there's a lot of opportunity here?
Yes.
Yeah, we could pick any road. But then, other than that, you know, we've been doing the, some of the remodeling work for the police department and the new dispatch that they're putting in. Our electrician has done quite a bit of work there. The men have done work patching and painting, and carpet will go in Sunday morning, and then it should be ready for John and the company putting in all the material to get it together. And that's basically what we've been doing outside of fighting the winter and filling holes. That's my report.
Well, that's quite a job, too, because you completely gutted that dispatch. Can you imagine all those radios, all that signalization? It's just nuts. Mike?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. We're working on the Board of Building Standards reports for 2013. Been busy. Dennis and Caleb have been off and on with the flu, so Andrea and I have had our hands full. The two nursing homes are on the agenda for Monday night, and the assisted-living center, we gave them clearing permits, so they're going to be clearing the trees. You're going to see that soon off of South Bedford Road, and the grading permit should be in about two weeks for the site, and then the building to follow that. That could be my report.
Thank you.
Mike, those trees are already down. I was over there this morning, and I was like, where'd those, I don't remember, I don't think they were there two days ago, and all of a sudden, the trees are down.
And they had to switch contractors, too.
I know. That was wild, to see that this morning.
Yeah, they were supposed to show up Monday morning with the contractor. He didn't show, and they had to go out by, get another contractor and do it all pretty quick, so...
Wow, that's amazing.
Before there's any bad issues.
I know they want to kind of get that ground, I mean, you know, start building over there in June when kids are getting out, so...
That's correct.
You know? It's awesome, though.
All right, Angela.
Thank you. Over the next few weeks, we're going to be reaching out to people, contacting those who were subject to paying the $50 annual non-resident maintenance fee that was rescinded. We will be contacting them by mail, and we will be sending them postcards to have them come back in, get reacquainted with us, and come in. They can bring that card in to redeem it for complimentary services and gifts. We're also going to be notifying them that the $50 fee will be credited to their accounts at the recreation center, those who did pay that, so it can be used same as cash in the future towards membership renewals or towards programs. We're also going to be hosting an open house, and we're going to encourage people to come in. they came out last Saturday, March 8th, and we did our final grant for the Division of Wildlife, Step Outside Grant, that we gave away free fishing poles and taught younger kids how to cast into the pool. And we had over 30 kids last Saturday, and the other event that we had in February, we had about 25, I think. So, we had 55 kids come out, and ODNR gave us $500 to purchase those small rod and reels, and a lot of the people, the parents that were there, really appreciative of the program. And again, we have another one slated for June that we did last year, and last year we got over 80, and I'm expecting a bigger turnout because of the popularity of it, and now that word's spread that you get some free equipment. But as I came up, I had mentioned to the mayor, as I come up that Saturday on, get off 271 ramp, I noticed a car in front of me, and it said Number One Tesla, and that was his license plate, and it was a, it was a Tesla, and guess where he was going? And I took a picture of it, and I was excited, and called the mayor, was like, guess what? We got the first fish, you know? And so, it was kinda cool just to see the first Tesla using our facility, and later on, he did go out and use it, the charging facility out here. But, yeah, we've been working on the budget lately, and again, we got, the final budget will be passed on March 27th in lieu of the state law that says we have to have one in place by the 31st, so it's been a, it's been a little bit trying, but we're getting through it, and I appreciate all the cooperation from the department heads. But, you know, we've got a downturn in the revenue stream, and we just have to make those adjustments. That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Tim?
No report, Mayor.
John?
Real quick, Mayor, on Nixle, I had some folks after the council meeting last couple weeks ago, asked me how to get Nixle. If you don't have a cellphone to get text, you can go to nixle.com, that's N-I-X-L-E.com, and sign up, so you can get the emails that come through. Because when we send it out through dispatch, there's just one button you click to send the text, and another button for emails also. So, if you don't have a cellphone and would still like to get the, the Nixle alerts, they will come through on your email. That's all I have.
I have something. You know, you guys never get the credit you deserve, but I, I just happened to notice something in today's newspaper, The Leader, about the stop, stopping of a car chase that went up and down 271, up and down 480, officers putting their lives at risk, and one officer actually getting hurt. And on the front page was that same officer for risking his life in that house fire. That's a great job you guys do. Thank you very much.
Yeah, a lot of people, it was a typical traffic stop. Suspended license. Turns out, he was wanted for attempted murder, so you never know what a typical traffic stop will be, so.
He recovered the gun, he threw out the window, 105 miles an hour. You gotta give you guys a lot of credit and a lot of thanks.
We had a lot of help from area departments. Oakwood recovered the gun, Bedford Heights helped with the suspect, in fact, one of their detectives, I think, caught the suspect after he ran through a couple businesses, over a few fences around, you know? But everybody works together well, and we got the guy, so that's all that counts. He's off the streets, he's in jail, and...
Well, say a special thanks to Nick, for me, Nick Zabel?
I will.
Are you pleased? Thank you. All right, moving on, Nick?
I have a report, Mayor.
All right, Joe?
Yes, Mayor, I'm happy to deliver to you tonight a check from the City of Cleveland for $107,244. It was delivered to me today from the City of Cleveland, payable to us and to the city. That's for the settlement and the Brooklyn Water Lines. Also, I talked to the title company today. As you know, several years ago, we had a litigation with the Macedonia Investors, and part of the settlement was that once they get permits, they are going to pay to the city $50,000, thereabouts, for sidewalk construction throughout the city, so that settlement check should be coming within the next month or so as well.
Good news, and good job. Thank you. All right.
Joe, that's, excuse me, wait, Joe, that's over by, by the Girl Scout Way over there?
Yes.
Macedonia Investors.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the Bird Streets.
Okay.
All right, is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
I have one quick question. The time clocks, have they, have they all been dismantled and returned, and do we get a refund, or did we ever pay for them? I'm just trying to see how that impacts.
We paid for one, there was two additional ones, and I don't know the status of them. They were dismantled and put in my office, two of them, in a box. I believe the third one might be at the rec center still.
It was taken down.
It was taken down?
Yeah.
So, I have to contact the vendor and see what we can work out.
And then when they're returned, we get a refund, or?
I, I, like I said, we'll probably have to just see. I mean, they could be implemented in other locations, because we do have time clock setter. So, we'll just have to see which way was to go with that.
How much did that cost for that one?
The first one, I think there's, I want to say 3,600. I'd have to check. Their software package, that was expensive, and then there, and then for each additional time clock, it's so much. I think it might have been 7,100 for one clock and one software.
Can you figure out the total, what we expended on that, and email that to us? In terms of what we spent, and they're not getting back? Thanks.
Any other business? If none, do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming. Come again.
This is for me, I assume, and a little of the sketch, and get that to him.
Do you have any, like mommy and me program providing?
We do. One of them's a swimming one, and one, from time to time, we do a sign language. But that's really all we've had recently.
Okay.
You have nothing going on at the moment, like this month or year? No, but those are pretty much the two. I mean, the swimming, you know, each session, we start a new session, you know, that, they can sign up for at any time for the next session, but the, the sign language, we don't have right now. We had it in the summer, and we had it in the fall, and then she couldn't do winter, so we'll probably bring it back spring. We had a lot of people do that.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll talk to Scott, we'll get it in before the plan.
I just want to get that.
But it should be good budget.
It's gonna be budget. Thank you.
I know, I understand the confusion, but the, because when I ran through with him, I understood that it was an actual... Everybody's all happy now, is that what I'm saying?